If you'd please just introduce yourself and where you live, and we'll try to gently remind you about three minutes. Want, just one, one second, if we could move the microphone up, Brent?
Sorry about that.
Thank you, no, then, no problem.
My name is John Stutzman, I live in El Prado. I've been living here in Taos County for forty-six years. I've been asked by numerous veterans of Taos County to comment on the status of the cemetery. And I would like to continue that discussion with questions like, when is the final completion date? To have a meeting with Mr. Sanchez, with very, with numerous veterans separately, so we can ask questions. I went down to the legislature and argued for more money this year, which we received to make total required to complete the project. And we are definitely concerned about getting a completion date. I went through the budget, and there's no phase one, phase two, or phase three. It's just a, a budget of numbers. And we are sitting there and waiting for, because we don't know how long it takes to put a hole in the ground. Several of our veterans have died during the course, and we have no place to put them. And I think it behooves Taos County to move this project rapidly along to completion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Stutzman, thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to speak? Good morning.
Good morning, everyone, good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Administrative Staff. First, I want to start off with saying thank you. When you said she is her mother's daughter, Erica is. Former Commissioner Paras Mondraguan was an instrumental person when we started the Ag Center. She was very supportive of that, very supportive of our 4-H program. And in her footsteps, Erica followed with that and has always supported us with 4-H and any youth program and any nonprofit organization. And anytime that she has been asked to help out, even at the Sheriff's Posse Rodeo, Erica has always been there, along with her sidekick. So I want to thank the Paras family for raising such an instrumental person in our community. Thank you, thank you. She has become, they have been, become part of our family, starting with her father working for my mom at Taos Gravel Products, and that became a family. And we thank them, thank you very much. Next, I want to introduce formally that we do have a county extension agent. He has accepted the position. He will be a resident by marriage in Taos County here soon. His name is Will Wright. He will start July first hitting the ground running. He will go with me to Las Cruces for our annual state 4-H conference and spend a whole week down there in the miserable heat. But he'll be doing all of his administrative stuff with New Mexico State University. So we will have an agent. He comes to us with knowledge, both academically and, secondly, from acquired knowledge with noxious weed, invasive weeds, and the ranching industry. His background is mostly in forestry, though, that's what his education was. He was a professor at Highlands University. He has both his master's and his bachelor's degree in agriculture. So we didn't have to negotiate on salary, which was like a blessing. Darlene laughed at the, at Commissioner Beal laughed at the, at our hiring meeting when we talked about that. And secondly, I want to formally invite everyone here. We, New Mexico State University Small Farms Task Force is hosting a life, a northern livestock school. It's for youth, not just pertaining to the 4-H and FFA, but to youth that are raising animals, want to know more about nutrition. Their, how to, how to raise them, how to go forward with a, a marketing program with it. Commissioner, Commissioner Mascarenas has one of his grandkids that's going to be involved in it this weekend. It is Friday, starting at one o'clock in the afternoon till five o'clock. Saturday from nine to four, we have instructors coming in to instruct for lamb, goat, and swine. It's going to be held at the Ag Center, so please come by, have lunch with us on Saturday. It will be a great experience for these, for the youth, not only for the youth, but for the adults and the parents helping these kids out. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Good news this morning, thank you. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to come up and make a few comments? Okay, then I'm going to turn the phone off of Do Not Disturb. If you're listening to us online, please call 575-737-6310. Again, that's 575-737-6310. We still need to introduce like the history fact of the day for while we wait. You up for that next one? One last time, 575-737-6310. Okay, then we're going to go back on Do Not Disturb and move on to Agenda Item 9. 9A is a presentation regarding the Taos Nest Project. And Matt, your name's on the agenda, but I think, okay. We've got Mr. Matt Whitner, who is a community liaison, and Catherine Hummel, the executive director of Dreamtree/Taos Nest. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody, how are you? Good, happy to be here. Appreciate y'all's time, and like I said, glad to be here, be able to present Taos Nest to you all. Taos Nest: Navigating Emergency Support Together, okay? I am Matt Whitner, I'm the community liaison for Dreamtree Project. It's Catherine Hummel, our executive director. And I'm going to be doing this little update for you guys, so bear with me, okay? So Dreamtree, as you all know, we provide youth services, is what we're known for. We have our youth shelter right here. We have our transitional living program there on campus and off campus for our youth. And we also have our AmeriCorps Enchanted Circle, Enchanted Circle Corps of AmeriCorps. Our services that we provide for everyone is our street outreach, our community housing, and Nest: Navigating Emergency Support Together. You're going to hear that because I kind of think that's important, everybody knows what Nest stands for. So what is Taos Nest? So it is that building right across the street there, the old senior citizen building, okay? And it's a beautiful building in a perfect location. It is going to be a one-stop service navigation and resource center for anyone who needs assistance, anyone, okay? It's going to be an emergency overnight shelter for all adults eighteen and over. It's going to be housed on one side by Dreamtree Project, Heart of Taos, Taos Coalition to End Homeless, which is the men's shelter who we will be absorbing in, and then Youth Heartline, along with hopefully others. And I don't know, are you guys actually looking at the presentation, or do you have that? Okay, all right. Like I said, though, you know where it's at, the beautiful building right over there. We cleaned it when we moved in at the first year, we went in, you know, as long, as well as the individuals that were there before us, you know, after they cleaned all their stuff out, we went in and cleaned it up. And yeah, it's, it's going to be nice, it's, okay, so there we go. And, but, right here, if we go to, there we go. So that's what it looks like, it's clean, and it's like that right now, so. Thank you, if you can, we'll go to the... Next, there we go. And right here is kind of a floor plan of, as you can see in the dark blue lines, the construction updates that we will be doing to the building to configure it, to set up for the needs of those that we're going to be serving. So I go over it, but it's a little bit hard, it'd be easier just to walk you through the building one day. So let me know whenever you're available, we can do that. And lastly, on the last slide, you can see the progress to date. We got the Nest development team is in place, short-term lease is secured, funding is secured. And here just recently, the town gave us a special use permit, which is awesome. Thank you, town, thank you, everybody, for that. And here we are, the, and there's things literally happening today. Catherine, do you have anything that you would like to, I mean, I mean, quite honestly, today?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, just to share an update that this morning, the State Board of Finance did approve the long-term lease that is on your agenda this morning.
And that's all I've really got on that, I can't talk that part. And yeah, and I'd like to say, on the, this morning, that to Erica, that was amazing. That's Taos, right there, so, yeah. Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Matt, and Catherine, for the update and the overview and the breaking news from the state. That's pretty awesome. Commissioners, any comments or questions for Matt or Catherine?
I just have...
Commissioner Beal, please.
Yes, I remember the day when we were all, I think it was on Zoom, right? Talking about the needs and also talking about where could this be set up? And, and you know, it took a collaboration, certainly cooperation, from Town and Taos, and, and a passion and desire for people to come together and come up with a solution. I am so proud of Taos and the humanitarian side that we, we really demonstrate each and every day. And so I, you know, hats off to Catherine and all those that are participating and actually getting the work done. Because often, we Commissioners, we, we think of all these ideas, want to be part of it, but we're certainly not experts in this area. But we, I think, often know to just get out of the way and let people do what they do best. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Beal. Any other questions or comments? I'll echo your thanks, especially to the partners who are going to be providing services there, because that's such a critical piece, right, to help people move, hopefully, out of or beyond the, the situation that brought them to emergency shelter in the first place. So thank you, guys, for all that you're doing to put this together. I'll also echo, Darlene, you said it beautifully, the, our thanks to the Town of Taos, because they granted that permit that was the week before last. I'm not sure those of us who were there will ever be part of a more beautiful meeting. Go look at their planning commission meeting online, if you haven't seen it, it might make you cry. I think that's the theme of our morning this morning, is just the, what we feel when we take care of each other. So thank you so much for being part of that.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
And congratulations on approval of the long-term lease, that's not a small thing. Item 9B is a presentation regarding the Paseo Project. And Mr. Matt Thomas, your name is on our agenda as executive director, but it's great to see you bring your partners here.
Thank you so much. Is it possible to have our slides up, please? Thank you. Thanks. Hello, I am Matt Thomas, I'm the executive director of the Paseo Project. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for having us here today. I would like to introduce our presenters. We have Contessa Trujillo, Jenna Grainer, and Jessica Stern, who is our independent consultant that helped us with this presentation. Our last team member, Amber Vasquez, couldn't make it today, so I'll try to fill in for her as well. I do want, before I get started and sharing our little update on what we've been working on, I wanted to acknowledge some of the other arts organizations and nonprofits who've joined us today. First, I want to thank Elizabeth for being here, she's our board chair for the Paseo Project. Charles with Main Street Taos, I want to thank, and Chelsea, like there with the Taos, Taos Center for the Arts, I want to thank. And of course, Lisa too, we've worked with Lisa for many years with the Taos Community Foundation in the past, and just want to say thanks. Next slide, please, thanks. First of all, we want to thank you for your continued support through the years, from sponsorship to, to assisting us with the Hundred Percent Community Mural last year, which was a lot of fun. Your last year's sponsorship for Paseo Festival. With your support, we successfully reached our tenth year, and we're really excited to share that with you this, today. Your support last year helped us keep going, we brought art to the streets, and we look forward to working with you again this year. Today, we'd like to share with you the work that we do, the projects we have planned for the summer and fall, and the overall impacts art and the Paseo Project make in our community. It's so important for local nonprofits to partner with our local government, and we want to continue helping you reach your goals. So highlights of today's presentation we would like to share with you is the importance of the creative economy and Paseo Project's role in that, the economic impact of the Paseo Project in our community, our contribution to education, job readiness, and career pathways for our youth, Paseo's role in talent attraction and retention for the community, as well as our contributions to health, vitality, equity, access, and social cohesion. And finally, the importance of the town and the county's investment in Paseo Project to achieve its own goals. Next slide, please. So a lot of these photos from the slides are from past events from Paseo, so that'll be fun to bring in a little color and art into our presentation. So the Paseo Project lives at the center of three primary values, art, education, and community. Our mission is to transform art through community and community through art. From our flagship Paseo Festival each fall to our Artist in Residence Program, art education programming, community partnerships, and creative placemaking efforts, we aim to present high-quality, inclusive projects and programming. We present work that is experimental, ephemeral, participatory, context-responsive, and totally free for our community. Some of these programs include what people know us best by is the Paseo Festival. It's our annual outdoor art festival, and since 2014, we've brought projection, performance, and installation art to the streets of Taos every fall, featuring regional, national, and international artists. The Paseo is an annual free outdoor event and takes over the streets of historic district. We invite you all out this September fifteenth and sixteenth. We have over thirty artists and installations ready to share with our community, and will be placed in Kit Carson Park this year. And the summers, we host up to three artists in residence. And these, this program offers an opportunity for artists from all over the world to come to Taos and work with our community on a public art project. The program is an opportunity for working artists to activate their projects within the community of Taos while exposing our community to new technologies, processes, and ideas. And artists typically spend almost up to four weeks, sometimes three weeks, here in Taos with our community. We kind of call it like the deep dive for the Paseo. We started this spring with Jamila McEwen and their project Exploring Sun, Wind, and Our Relationship to the Environment, all through the play of kites, you might have seen some photos or kites in the sky. Last month, we hosted Ruben Olgin, who explored the hidden stories of water in our community, wrapping up with a pop-up projection event on Ben Street. And coming in July, for four weeks, we have Jason Coyote Culver, who will be exploring last year's massive forest fires as a way of communicating, communicating forest management strategies and impacts on our environment. So we hope to announce some upcoming pop-ups for that this summer. With all our projects, we're actually, sorry, slide before, thanks. With all our projects, we offer education programming. The Paseo Project works with community partners to provide a year-round programming, exposing our youth to STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics. And we do this in the classroom enhanced through creative processes of local and visiting artists, and we'll share a little bit more about that here shortly. We also work a lot with public art initiatives. We bring art to the street, from public sculpture and crosswalk mural to wall mural projects, as you, the county has helped us with. And we help host local artists and creatives for seasonal installations in our public spaces. These public art projects bring liveliness and color to our streets while showing investment and pride in our local art scene. And finally, we wanted to just share a little bit more about our office space called The Hub. It's the home of our Paseo Project, and the shared office space offers discounted desk rentals and conference room space. And since 2020, we actually opened a month before the pandemic, it's become a dynamic networking center for local nonprofits, writers, entrepreneurs, and creatives of all types. So all of this work is completed through a dedicated staff of five, dozens of contractors, and hundreds of volunteers. We pay living wages, and all our artists are paid for their time. We know that art is work. Jessica is going to share more about our impacts as a part of the creative economy of Taos.
Good morning. My name is Jessica, and I am pleased to present, to present a very brief overview of the creative economy for you here today. Since some of you don't know me quite yet, previously, I spent the last five years working at the intersection of arts, business, economic development, and the creative economy at Americans for the Arts, which is the National Arts Industry Association. Recently, I worked with the Paseo Project as an independent consultant. And I want to be clear that, and disclose, that my presentation here today and presence here today is separate and unrelated to my new role as Economic Development Director at Taos County and is the result of prior work with the Paseo Project. So next slide, please. Thanks. I'm going to start with a very big picture in the hopes to contextualize the Paseo Project within the local, state, and national creative economy. Arts and culture is a powerful sector, and is not only big business, it's a dynamic and often under-tapped economic driver that can and should be a viable solution to economic and community development. Arts and culture is an industry, just like any other industry, such as healthcare and manufacturing. Arts jobs are jobs that have associated standard occupation codes, and national and state economic activity is tracked via the North American Industry Classification System, or NAICS codes, through the Bureau of Economic Analysis Arts and Culture Satellite Production Account, which tracks thirty-five industries that comprise the creative economy, as well as employment and supply chain. The fullness of the nonprofit and for-profit arts industries constitutes the creative economy. According to the Arts and Culture Satellite Production Account, in 2021, arts and culture added $1.02 trillion, or 4.4% to the US GDP. While the overall US economy showed 5.9% increase in GDP from 2020 to 2021, arts and culture grew by over thirteen percent. Arts and culture actually ranks third in value add to the US economy, behind healthcare and social assistance and retail trade. In the state of New Mexico, arts and culture is the fourth-largest value add, behind mining, retail, and construction, respectively. Arts and culture is the fifth-largest employer in the state, behind retail, construction, transportation, and mining, respectively. The creative economy accounts for $3.2 billion, or 2.9% of the New Mexico economy, contributing 23,766 jobs. As you can see on this slide, very tiny writing, it, that between 2020 and 2021, while New Mexico's GSP rose seven percent, arts and culture, arts and culture showed a twenty percent increase in value add in state. Similarly, with state employment, overall employment rose by two percent, though the arts and culture sector grew by eight percent. These figures show the strength and viability of the creative economy as an important sector for investment and nurturing, and the Paseo Project is a key partner locally in that growth. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the national and statewide numbers are important, but let's take a look at the creative economy here in Taos County. These numbers were provided by former colleagues of mine at Americans for the Arts, who are working on creating a data set for all 3,143 counties across the country. So this data isn't quite public yet, but we get to have it here. Using fifty-three NAICS codes, this data shows the number of arts business establishments in Taos County, including nonprofits at seventy-four, the number of employees in those establishments at 235, and the number of individuals who report that their primary occupation is artistic at 538. Overall, arts and culture adds $86.2 million to Taos County, and incredibly is ranked at number sixty-one out of every single county in the country for the number of arts businesses per 10,000 people. I think that data point is pretty phenomenal. I also want to highlight that it is very likely that these numbers are low, as they do not include industries such as retail, because retail also includes things like hardware, home and auto supply, and any other kind of retail. Electronic shopping, such as mail order or online businesses that may be based in Taos County are not counted, as well as other artistic businesses, such as tattoo parlors, of which there are four in the county, because they're lumped in with other personal care services. So for example, working off a list of arts-based businesses just in the Taos Main Street District that Charles was kind enough to provide to me, including retail, I count ninety-three arts-based businesses in the Main Street District alone. So while capturing the exact data is difficult, I think we can say that even if the estimates are low, the creative economy is a significant and vital part of the town of Taos and Taos County. We'll get into Paseo's direct contribution to these numbers shortly. Having shared the national, state, and local context of the creative economy, I also want to highlight a couple of planned goals from the Town and County Comprehensive Plans that relate to the work of the Paseo Project. Next slide, please. Thank you. Again, the data is revealing about the strength of arts and culture in the town and county, but we also know that the town and county have specifically identified arts and culture as a means to community and economic development. For the, on the town side, in the new comprehensive plan adopted on June 4th, 2022, the plan's primary themes are to keep it local, improve life for Taos seños, support local businesses for local people. And the Town Council's goals itself are to focus on beautification, economic development, economic diversification, public-private partnerships, youth and family services. The Paseo Project, through its programming and economic impact, directly support the goals and strategies outlined in both the Town and County's comprehensive plans. For example, on page thirty-four of the Town Comprehensive Plan, it states that "one of the key municipal functions is a three-pronged approach to economic and community development that includes, quote, 'proactive local business support through grant writing and partnerships, marketing and outreach, and event development and production.'" Also, in the Town Comprehensive Plan's Economic Development Actions 5 and 21, it states that "the town hopes to work with local businesses through public-private partnerships to cultivate economic opportunities, support job creation, and provide living wages, and to continue producing entertainment events as an economic development and community service." "The Paseo Project serves as an activation towards these functions, as well as the county's fifth economic development goal within developing cultural and the creative economy, to, quote, 'develop and promote programming that better meets the needs and interests of modern tourists, focus on developing opportunities for hands-on experiences, opportunities to engage the local community, and local cultural activities,' end quote." So having provided the most brief overview of the creative economy and dipping our toes into the county and town's own priorities, I'm going to pass it back over to Matt, who is going to talk about the direct economic impact of the Paseo Project. Thank you so much.
Next slide, please. Thanks, Jessica. So what exactly is the economic impact of Paseo, the festival itself? So on this slide, you'll see a little slice of that support. In 2018, we hired a third-party consultant to conduct an economic impact report for Paseo. We've hired them again for 2023, but we want to see what our past impacts and numbers are. Here you can see for 2018, our total economic impact was over half a million dollars spent in our community. Thirty-four thousand, more than thirty-four thousand in total GRT earned for town and county and state. We had a total of fifty-five jobs, part in full-time. And we're excited to get more detailed information from the town, their recent subscription to Datify, which tracks cellphone data, that's a whole other presentation. With some new numbers, we had over sixteen thousand attendees in 2018 and 2019. It also shows a nearly fifty-fifty split of local and visiting people, that's greater than fifty miles, would be for the visiting. This also relates, as Jessica mentioned, to the Town Comprehensive Plan, which states, quote, "to work with local businesses through public-private partnerships to cultivate economic opportunities, support job creation, and provide living wages, and to continue producing entertainment events as an economic development and community service." When we see that there's a split of fifty-fifty of attendees who are local to Taos, this is powerful data that shows how important Paseo is to both the local character of the community and the attraction of tourists. And it squarely meets with the town's goal to produce events as an economic and community development service while keeping it local, as outlined in the plan. This is no different than for the county. Next slide, please. "We know that numbers are important, but the impact and experience of our local businesses, business partners is equally important. Here is our massive list of past, present, past and present local business support. Since 2014, we've worked with dozens of local businesses in multiple capacities. They've provided their money, their time, or even their space to something they deeply believe in." I want to share a quote from a longtime friend of Paseo, a local downtown business, Chocola Bintabar, and their perspectives about having Paseo, what Paseo means for their business. Debbie Vincent from Chocola Bintabar shared this with us, and I quote, "Paseo is an inclusive event. It has really brought art to the streets, and in doing so, it has significantly contributed to the long tradition..." and in doing so, it has significantly contributed to the long tradition of Taos arts. By engaging children and people of all ages, it not only promotes and supports education in a free and festive event, it serves as a genuinely local celebration of arts and culture for everyone." So, Paseo contributes enormously to the growth of a real sense of community. She goes on to say that, "During Paseo, Chocola revenue has gone up 100% and has become a weekend to look forward to in September. Every year, we sell out of chocolate and all of our products," end quote. And we know that Paseo serves more than just an economic activity. It also makes other impacts in our community, from education, job readiness, to talent retention, and impacts in our health, vitality, and cohesion." Next slide, please. Unfortunately, Amber, who is our, Amber Vasquez, who is our education manager, couldn't make it today, so I'm going to fill in for her right now. "The Paseo Project provides educational programming all year round through our community education partners. These programs bring to the classrooms STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics. These programs connect classrooms to world-class art professionals, 21st-century skills, and many different creative art practices. Whether it be in-school demos or virtual online events, the Paseo Project's education programs expose our community to exciting new ways of engaging with the world. For past three years, we've had the internship program. This offers both intern and apprenticeship opportunities for northern New Mexicans aged 16 to 25. This year, we have an amazing cohort of six young people. These programs help build pathways to careers by offering young adults a paid, fully-paid position where they can learn and refine their production and technical arts training. The program is designed to incorporate Paseo Festival support work, as well as educate interns in technical skills that are necessary to succeed in a nonprofit arts organization. Our internship program also strives to develop trade skills in an underserved population in our Taos community." Next slide, please. "We have asked past interns, 'Did your Paseo Project internship impact your interest in working in the arts, either with school, professionally, or recreationally?'" They replied, and here's one, quote, "Presenting at Paseo has been a very monumental step in my journey as a young aspirational individual. Since then, partially through the connections with the festival, we have been able to go, I have been able to go further with the project than I had ever anticipated, even presenting at the Roundhouse for State STEM Day and at the New Mexico Natural History Museum." The quote continues, "Aside from tangible positive, presenting at the festival had a massive impact on my outlook, hopes for the future, and mood. Having the opportunity to connect with so many local people has helped me realize my balance between my love for science, art, and theater, and this comes in the form of community involvement. Paseo has opened a whole world for me, and I'm grateful for the experience." And that was an anonymous contribution. On this slide, you can see several other quotes from past interns, some who have gone on to work or go to school in the arts. Next slide, please. "The Paseo Project has a STEAM week, which is associated with the festival. For the entire week leading up to the, to the Paseo, we bring participating festival, excuse me, we bring participating festival artists into the classroom, and then we bring classrooms out to the installation sites for a deep dive into the art-making process through STEAM. Students are able to get a behind-the-scenes look, as well as create their own art in the style of the artist. We've built mandalas, engineered inflatable art, explored mycelium, and even painted rope with robots. The Paseo Project also brings workshops from its artists-in-residence out into the community to share their work, vision, and processes, and this happens throughout the summer. These workshops can be geared towards adults, children, or families, and run the gamut on what they offer. Artists-in-residence have engineered kites, created projection-mapped art, taught circuitry, and our last artists-in-residence Asekiya artist, Ruben Olgin, had families at Twirl making paintings using different types of mud that he'd collect from all over the state. As you'll see on this slide, we have listed education partners from the past few years, and it's just been a pleasure to work with all these amazing educators and young people. Art education is important for all careers, and it is a part of the design of our education programs to lay pathways to careers in the arts." And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Contessa.
Morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, Taos has always been a rich cultural space. Bustling with energy and creativity, it is my ancestral land. And having been born and raised in Taos, the arts have been an intrinsic part of my identity, and it's helped me navigate the world. My parents are incredibly creative people, and in my home, there was no lack of materials that could be readily transformed into art supplies of some sort. Nor was there a shortage in my parents' ability to create something from nothing. That sentiment has been a great source of pride, resilience, and ingenuity, making something from nothing. This is a survival skill, and I was raised to be an incredible, and I was raised to be a creative problem solver. My family's historically worked blue-collar jobs because that was what felt safe and secure. When it came to the arts, they didn't see opportunity in terms of financial security, especially not with respect to providing for their family. Artistic practice, however, was ever-present and deeply supported in my household, and I proceeded to choose a path that now feels to push that boundary and straddle a line between financial security and stability, whilst maintaining a tangible connection to the arts in a way that is beneficial to my community. For over 20 years, I've worked in the arts in one form or another, for galleries or organizations here in Taos, in Colorado, San Francisco, California, and Portland, Oregon. These opportunities are hard to come by, even in big cities, and especially upon my return home. Being able to secure meaningful work in the arts with the Paseo Project has been such a blessing, especially in my hometown. Paseo is beloved and one of, if not the only, arts organization of this caliber in the entire state of New Mexico. At that, Paseo Project does an incredible amount of work, considering our small and mighty team of five. Furthermore, I believe the Paseo Project to be an arts, the arts organization that is bringing Taos arts reputation into the 21st century with technology and innovation. The Paseo Festival itself ignites joy and speaks to everyone. It is a unifying factor in a place that has a challenged past and a history of difficulty in bringing people together in a community, bringing together a community that is truly representative of the diversity that is Taos. It not only supports access to the arts as a free event for our entire community, it also supports local artists and folks who have been historically excluded in the arena of the arts. Giving voice to local artists is hugely impactful in terms of culture and representation, and efforts to have a truly diverse, equitable, and inclusive events programming, and inclusive events and programming. It has been such a gift to return home and have the great fortune to work with the Paseo Project, who is doing this work and contributing in so many ways to benefit the Taos community at large. I'm grateful to help with these efforts and be able to bring my experiences and skillset home in order to further this work and create opportunities and pathways for Taos's youth who are considering futures and careers in the arts. As you know, our community is comprised of a unique and diverse population, and for hun, oh, next slide. "And for hundreds of years, our community has sustained itself through the shared experience of art, and continue to this day to come together with ritual, dance, and performance. And as the world struggles to find a grounding in peace and justice, we believe that creating more shared experiences, experiences the entire community can gather around, will open up new opportunities for understanding and connection. Taos has a reputation of being a warm and welcoming place. People come to experience all Taos has to offer, from land to culture, and the arts are inextricably linked with what makes Taos so special and why people love it so much. The Paseo Project is intentionally designed to bring people together. In 2018, the Paseo brought over 16,000 people to the town of Taos, 8,000 of those roughly living 50 or more miles outside of Taos County, while inviting locals to partake in a completely unique experience that exists nowhere else in the state of New Mexico. Attracting and retaining talent is about creating a sense of belonging and welcoming. Gina's quote above shows that people who live here and are seeking talent know that Paseo is a draw, and it's part of what makes Taos unique, and is a strong enough pull to bring new memories here, community members here, or entice those raised here to return, more specifically cultivating a place where local youth can viably stay and make a life here, or, like me, return after some time away. We all know that maintaining a sense of place, preserving heritage, and keeping talent here is important for the sustainability and viability of our culture and our local economy. From studies conducted by the US Department of Agriculture and the National Endowment for the Arts, in rural counties, the presence of four or more performing arts organizations is positively associated with the co-location of businesses that are substantive innovators and are design-integrated businesses. We can see, because of the plethora of arts organizations and entities, including the Paseo Project, that research comes to life. And because their existence, because of their existence, in turn makes Taos a desirable place to live and to work. With that, I'll leave you now with Jenna, who will talk more about the health and vitality of Taos in relation to the arts.
Thanks, Contessa. Good morning. So, once again, the Paseo Project is helping Taos County and the town of Taos meet their comprehensive plan, which includes the Strong at Heart Strategy. Do you mind advancing the slide, please? Designed in 2017 and 2018, that's referred to page 74 in the comprehensive plan, Paseo meets several of these goals and recommendations, including places for people, a real place where locals want to be, a strong economy, and thriving local businesses. Our event brings thousands together around art and creative imaginative experiences. No other event in the region has that pull. This event provides opportunities to create new memories and new possibilities of a community that can come together through acts of kindness and mutual appreciation. In our post-COVID world, the opportunities for seeing and knowing our neighbors is diminishing, as forms of entertainment have moved to the digital realm, where storytelling is not an act of the collective, but one of a solitary confinement within the home. The Paseo Project believes in the power of art and engagement to bring people together, even if for small moments of time, to share an experience together. I believe we need more opportunities to come together, aside from financial transactions, to occupy space together. We need to see each other. We need to see a smile. We need to hear a laugh and share positive moments. It is through these joyous experiences that we begin to see commonalities and gain empathy toward one another. The Paseo Project has a different approach, thanks to its presentation of art forms that do not, are not often found in galleries. Art that does not hang on a wall, art that is participatory and transforms public spaces, and that invites community members from all backgrounds, perhaps particularly those who would not consider themselves arts people, to come out and be immersed. Highlighting cutting-edge artwork and technologies that can be found in major cities around the world, the Paseo brings the creativity of the world to the small community of Taos. The Paseo inspires a new generation of creative thinkers while exposing the larger community to new ideas, new technologies, and new perspectives. In addition, the contributions of artistic practice and presentation are important for mental health. Supporting artists to share their work with the community builds artist confidence and self-esteem. Viewing and making art can be calming to the nervous system. This helps depression, anxiety, and stress. Both activities help folks feel more engaged and resilient. Art allows expression through creativity without having to rely on words. That being said, I'm going to hand it over to Matt to wrap it up. Thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Jenna. Next slide, please. This pie graph that you see here shares where our funding goes, and this was for 2022. The Paseo Project has been a long and powerful generator, oh, sorry, let me start. The Paseo Project has long been a powerful and generative partner, both to the town of Taos and the county. And throughout this presentation, we've shared how we significantly contribute to the local and state creative economy, as well as the overall economy. We've shared how we positively, positively impact businesses and business owners. We've shared what the Paseo Project not only means to youth and future workers, but to our role in career pathways in the creative sector. We've highlighted how Paseo directly attracts individuals to move here, and also what it keeps locals here and contributes to our unique culture and lifeways of northern New Mexico. We've shared how our programming and partnerships create equitable access to creative experiences, provide completely unique opportunities for social and community cohesiveness, and contribute to the overall health and vitality of this place. Next slide. "And this pie graph shares where we get our funding from to make this all happen. We'd love to see our local government support the arts with a larger, larger slice of this pie. It builds resilience in our organization and shows how much we, as a community, believe in a thriving arts and culture. What we want to part with is how deeply committed the Paseo Project is in being a strong partner with our public institutions in helping you achieve your goals, and therefore our mutual community goals. In addition to the direct relations to creative economy goals that the town and county have, Paseo is integrated so much more broadly. We helped meet the town's comprehensive plan land use goal number two, quoted, 'The downtown has a strong economy with thriving local businesses, provides places for Taosseños to socialize, host events for the community to come together, provides a variety of housing choices, and is walkable and bikeable.' The Paseo Project helps meet that goal. The Paseo also contributes to the Green Network by collaborating on the cultural projects, such as Asekiya Key, and by supporting artists-in-residence, such as Joanna King Lopez with their Adobe Brick Project in 2022, and artists like Juanita Lavadie and her Asekiya Crossings Project. The Paseo helps meet those goals. Paseo is involved with broader economic development goals. One such case includes the new Hotel Willa, including a partnership with Paseo to activate their gallery and artists-in-residence space. From the Town Comprehensive Plan on page 183, I quote, "Through local efforts and regional partnerships, the economy of Taos continues to build and diversify economic-based jobs, develop emerging industries, strengthen and grow cultural industries, including tourism and art, and to support its local workforce and residents by prioritizing the sustainability of the community, culture, and natural resources." The Paseo Project helps meet that goal. Government cannot do everything for everyone. This is why partnerships with community organizations are crucial to building strong, healthy communities. We hope that this presentation has highlighted both the richness of what the Paseo Project brings to the town and county of Taos, and also how we recognize the important role we play alongside the town and county in helping you achieve your goals. In order to do this, we need your investment. We are a business. We are an employer. We are an educator. We're a facilitator. We're an incubator, a presenter, a community network. We cannot help you achieve your goals without your reoccurring financial investment." And last slide, please. This is a list of our supporters so far in 2023. We'll end here with these sponsors, and we'd love to include the Taos County on this list. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, Matt. And thank you also, Jenna. Thank you, Jessica, as independent consultant. Thank you, Contessa. Great to see you. And Elizabeth and Charles as well. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for our Paseo Project team this morning? Commissioner Beal?
Sure. I would just like to say thank you for the presentation. I certainly have had an opportunity to go out there on, during the time in which you have all that beautiful art out there, and I've taken my grandchildren. It's really been exciting. Some of the photos that I did see here, I remember actually laying down and being underneath the, I don't know what you call it, but it was at Twirl. It was really fun. We have photos with my grandchildren. And so, certainly would hope that Taos County could be a partner as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Beal. You said a keyword, fun. It's a great and, and engaging art that makes you think, but it's always such fun. You see, you see families, you see your neighbors, you see your friends, you see people you might not have seen for a while. So, can't wait for September. Any other comments, questions? All right. Thank you so much, team. Thanks for being here, and thanks for a great thorough presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. This takes us to our agenda item 10, Contracts, Agreements, MOUs, and Bids. Item 10A is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Lease Agreement by and between Taos County and Dreamtree Project. Brent or Patrick? Okay, or both of you?
Catherine will come up in a moment to let Patrick talk about this. One of the things I told Patrick and Catherine that we needed to emphasize to the commission, it was not an easy lift to get this lease done. They were still making changes. Yes, yesterday, Patrick was still working on it. Friday, the Board of Finance gave us their, their last of the changes that they would like to, to see. So, this has been a huge lift, and it wasn't easy. There was a lot that Catherine had to do too, and, and to make. There was a lot that Catherine had to do too and to make right and to justify the in-kind work. We had to prove that upfront on the methodology of what we were going to use. So, this is a great precursor to the, all the other documents and leases that are going to be going to Board of Finance in the next few months as well. With that, I'll let Patrick talk about this lease.
Madam Chair Commissioners, the lease before you, I think you got one with, looks like this has some red writing on it. It should look familiar. You approved a lease like this very recently. One of the requirements for the Board of Finance is to submit a lease to them that has been approved by the board, which we did. And then afterwards, they had, after they reviewed it along with our complete application, they had suggested or demanded or insisted on some changes to be made. And those take the form of two different iterations of this document. I won't bore you with that. But if you'll note, the red in the document before you are changes that the Board of Finance staff required. We didn't really have a problem with them. They are, and neither did Dream Tree. I'll point out a couple, though, of some significance. Actually, I'm sure they're all significant, but that you would want to take note of. One is on page, it's actually paragraph, I don't have page numbers on here, it's on paragraph 16. It says, "The agreement is subject to approval. This lease shall be subject to and shall not be effective prior to being approved by the Board of Finance." So, because this lease is for, has a value of more than $5,000 and is worth, and extends more than five years, the statute says that the Board of Finance has to approve it. They wanted the language specifically put in there. And then I wanted to point out paragraph 30, which is right above the signature lines. It also says that the county manager is authorized to make any necessary changes to the agreement for the sole purpose of obtaining approval from the Board of Finance and if so required, execute the lease with any required amendments on behalf of the county commission. So, one of the requirements was that if there's another issue that may come up that Board of Finance hasn't identified yet, that the county manager be authorized to amend the contract to address those concerns. With, with those changes and the others that are in red, it's basically the same agreement that we had before. It's a long-term lease. It's going to take the place of the short-term lease, which expires on June 29th, so pretty quick here. And it allows Dream Tree to do all the wonderful things that they've just explained to you in one of the presentations earlier this morning. It is a, an example of intergovernmental cooperation with us being the owners of the building, the building being in the town, the town having to approve certain land use requests, us getting this lease done. So, I mean, it's something I think that the community should be proud of in terms of cooperation among, among government and private industry. And I'll stand for questions.
Thank you so much, Patrick. Appreciate the update and the overview. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Trillo? I just have one question. You pointed out paragraph 30, where should, should the Board of Finance ask for additions at its changes that we authorize? Brent, our county manager, to do that? Totally trust that process. You all have done an amazing job through this big lift so far. I'm just curious, is that fairly standard, like, language in our agreements?
Yes, it can be. Typically, in a lot of communities I've worked with, the commission will actually pass a resolution that covers all agreements that allows the manager to do that. This is a specific requirement of the Board of Finance in this instance, though.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And again, totally, totally fine with it. You all have done, I know that there were a lot of, I don't necessarily want to call them hoops to jump through, but there was a lot to get done in order for this to pass through the state. So, appreciate that a lot and appreciate whatever is going to come next to get us over the finish line. Yeah, Commissioner Beal?
What comes to mind is the roadway and that it was an issue because it still belonged to town of Taos. How, I was just curious how we resolved that or how Board of Finance was able to, to allow us to move forward.
Well, there was, there was discussion between myself and the town attorney with regard to that roadway. The town basically expressed to us that they didn't think they still owned the roadway. That is the subject of the appraiser's concern. And then they said, "But even if we do own it, we don't have a problem with using it as a parking, as parking." So, that statement by the town attorney was enough. It was in the form of an email that I forwarded to. I've gotten to know the Board of Finance staff really well in the last year. So, there was a lot of communication between us, and that was, that was sufficient for them to approve it.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Good question.
I think, Catherine, did you want to say anything? She doesn't want to say anything. I've actually had the pleasure of knowing Catherine for a very long time, for about 15 years. And I will say, this is the first time Catherine hasn't said anything in my presence. So, this is really a monumental thing. I'm just teasing.
It really is monumental, and I want to thank our team. I know that this was a team effort on the county side and Catherine, you and your team. This is big and, and our attorney said it well, like, this is something that our community should be proud of, the degree of cooperation that has gone into this. And again, we will take this opportunity, once again, thanks to the town, particularly their planning commission, who heard comments, as we referred to earlier today, from local faith-based organizations, social services organizations, all kinds of folks, just regular neighbors and folks spoke up at that meeting, and it was a testament to the beauty of this project, so.
Chair, if I may add, and earlier I made the comment that commissioners often, we have these, what we thought, we think brilliant ideas and, and often create a lot of work for our county, but they always take that challenge and, and run with it. So, we're very grateful for all the efforts put into this.
Well said. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. And now, we need a motion on whether or not to approve the lease agreement by and between Taos County and Dream Tree Project Incorporated as presented.
Motion to approve?
I will second. Madam Clerk? We've got a motion in two seconds. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherano?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes. Thank you and congratulations again. This takes us to item 10B, discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the acceptance of proposal of Phase Two for the Veterans Cemetery and authorizing the county manager to sign final contract. And with us this morning, we have Mr. Richard Sanchez, our Construction Projects Manager. Good morning, Richard.
Chair Commissioners, good to see you. This is a request because we've gotten legislative appropriations for Phase Two, the administration building, and a few other little periphery parts of it, to give our manager permission to execute a contract when it's prepared for the $3.1 million of the new administration building for the Veterans Cemetery. The only reason that I'm requesting this is that sometimes we're hoping to break ground and have concrete in place before winter shows up, and local government is assisting us and doing our paperwork and everything. And so, I would hate to have our contract ready and then, for whatever reason, a commission meeting gets swapped, and we're two, three weeks waiting to sign a contract for this because this is time-sensitive in the sense of construction costs and budget. If we don't get concrete down before winter time, we may not have enough money to actually complete the project next spring, the way things, construction costs have been going over the last couple of years. So, this is asking to accept the proposal. It's unlock in our pricing so that the price doesn't change between now and the executed contract and the building permit. It'll also allow us to apply for a building permit, which can take anywhere from a month to several months, the way things have been going at the state. It's a complete building, so it's a significant review process, electrical, mechanical, structural, life safety, ADA compliance, all that has to be approved by the state. Any questions?
I do have a question. So, when you make reference to needs to be approved by local government, you are referring to DFA, Department of Finance?
Yes, it's already there. And so, they're working on it to get the paperwork to us as soon as the fiscal year starts.
And the reason why I ask, and I understand that, but just so that those that are viewing can understand that it's not really in our hands right now, it is in their hands. Is that correct?
Correct. We do not have a grant agreement for the $3.2 million. We're trying to be a step ahead and have all our contracts ready. So, for the moment, we have the grant agreement and both sides signed because we can't do any work until the DFA side signs.
Got it.
So, we're trying to be that far ahead.
Okay.
And that way, once that grant agreement comes in place, we can start construction.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Vice Chair Romero?
Richard, we had a question earlier in the public comments, an individual, he's still here, wanting information on the timeline and what's going on, what's going on now and with the, with the facility and then actually opening and burials.
I can't speak to the burials. That's a policy decision, the commission and administration. But we are closing out Phase Two. Landscaping is probably 90% done. The committal shelter is done with the exception of the stucco color on the wall. Sidewalks are complete. Columbarium walls are up and complete and faced with marble. Landscaping is probably 90% complete. We have some adjustments to do on some sidewalks, so there's going to be a little bit of sod that'll have to be lowered. But the crypt field is 100%. It's sodded. If the administration and Department of Veterans Affairs wanted to proceed to actually use the cemetery, it meets all standards. We have electricity. Today, our sprinkler and landscaping contractor are supposed to be there, programming and testing the irrigation system. The well controls seem to be working fine. We've been irrigating manually because we didn't want to stop the sod schedule. And the roadway is complete to the west. The burial area is 100% complete with sod and everything. Survey markers will probably go in next week. The survey markers are so that you know where to dig for each individual crypt site. Technically, it's as complete as Angel Fire, actually more so because we have a committal shelter, but this is strictly a commission, this commission and Department of Veterans Affairs decision. The thought was that since we got the legislative appropriation to complete the administration building, it might be better to wait till it's 100% complete, but like I said, that's a policy decision.
Thank you for the question, Vice Chair, and thank you, Richard, for that update. And as, as a reminder, Richard has been giving good updates every, I think it's the first commission meeting of the month. So, I would encourage all the interested folks to come or watch our commission meetings, the first, the first Tuesday of every month. And then we can get like the latest update. And I know that you've also made the offer for people to call you and, and go over whatever questions or information they'd like to have. I have a question. The, the building that we saw where the roof is kind of there, is that the committal, there, is that the committal shelter?
That's the committal shelter. They're open-air structures that just basically a roof and some wind blocking, and there are lights in there, and that's where, if, if a person has a service, that's where they do the service before interment.
Okay. And where will the administration building?
The administration building, let's see.
These, the drone footage is really helpful.
Right there to your left, you see that little jog-in in the sidewalk. It will be directly to the east of that. That jog-in in the sidewalk is considered the cordage where a procession would wait for their scheduled time. At Santa Fe, they do one service, no more, they give you 45 minutes per service, and so they do, don't do more than eight services a day.
Okay.
And so, yeah, you can see right there. So, you see the jog-in to the left, that's, that's the burial area. Just to the south of it is the administration area. It's all fenced off right now in preparation for construction.
So, I have a question in regards, this question, I believe, is for Mr. Harameo. We have been in contact with the New Mexico veterans, with the department, and their, and how they can help us because obviously we don't have the expertise in order to bury or, yeah, the protocol.
Right. Like, like we had that meeting with the commission attendant at the Veterans Services Department, they will give us their expertise on how we need to do the burials. Like I mentioned at one of the budget hearings, the $600,000, they feel that's a good appropriate amount to start for an operating budget and personnel. So, that's no small feat of the counties to put $600,000 up to begin a cemetery.
Thank you for that reminder, Brent, because I know, it's okay. I know it's been such a focus to get, oh, this is newer. Great. The drone footage has been, has been great. Thank you. But I know to your point about the $600,000 that the county has set aside for operations, I think it's, it's all very easy for us to focus on what we can see or what we have, haven't seen yet. But we've had a lot of conversations about how we're going to actually operate this, like, who's going to staff it? How are we going to find those people? How are we going to pay those people? And that is something that the county is committed to, you know, through our budget process and through our ongoing conversations with the Department of Veterans Services. We're committing to solve that as this, as this work wraps up. So, that looks much different than a month ago. Thank you for the new drone footage. Thank you.
You can see the shrubbery and not even there, all the shrubs aren't, all the trees aren't in there, but you can see that area where the trees are. That's already all sodded, all the way up to the committal shelter. Like I said, the complete burial area from where you see that little tractor, all the way around to the white trucks is already sodded. The, all the shrubbery, rose bushes are in the flag plaza. We're waiting for some lighting fixtures that came in. We had some damage to our main flagpole. That's already been replaced. You can, that area, those three trees and the two that go back around the columbarium walls and the committal, that'll all be landscaped and grass all the way around coming down this side.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. Commissioners, any further questions for Richard? Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. That means that we now need to take action. This is decision regarding the acceptance of proposal of Phase Two for the Veterans Cemetery and authorizing the county manager to sign the final contract. Commission, what is, what are your wishes?
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Mascherano? Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherano?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes. So, this motion passes. Thank you very much.
Feel free anytime you want to drive out. Like I said, we do have gates and everything in place, but it's, like I said, next video is going to really show how nice it really is.
Thank you, Richard. Appreciate it. Yeah. Commissioners, could I entertain a motion for a five-minute recess before we dive into the rest of our agenda?
Motion to take a five-minute recess.
I will second. Madam Clerk, please call, thank you, Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote for a five-minute recess.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherano?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody, for indulging our short recess. Madam, can I entertain a motion to come back into regular session?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please call the roll to come back from recess.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes. Thank you. So we are back in our regular session at 10:42 AM. And we are on agenda item 11 Minutes. And 11A is approval of the June 6, 2023, regular meeting minutes. Commissioners, any comments, questions, requests, or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Stay.
Commissioner Vehel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes. Thank you. The meeting minutes are approved. This takes us to item 12 on our agenda, Resolutions and Ordinances. And 12A is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Number 2023-21, A Resolution Requesting a National Lab Regional Tax Distribution Study for Los Alamos National Labs. And Commissioners, this was the presentation we have had from Representative Joseph Sanchez last meeting. And as we normally do, we, with items like this, we don't react in the moment. We take the next meeting to make a decision. So I'm wondering if folks, I don't see Representative Sanchez with us here this morning, but I'm wondering if folks have any comments, questions, after spending a little bit of time with the resolution?
I do have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Vehel?
I'm curious who actually put the resolution together. Was it Representative Sanchez?
I believe it was Representative Sanchez. This is the memorial that, the wording is based on the memorial that he introduced at the state legislature.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
I will second, but with discussion? Yes, I had just a couple of questions or comments. And it is, it's kind of like the classic case where like taking a minute to think about it. Like it raised a lot of questions for me the more I spent time with this. And for one, I guess kind of I wish it were a conversation rather than a resolution because I'd love to know what other voices might have to say or what kind of insight to sort of like big questions overhanging this that, for example, our state tax and rev department folks might have. Because the resolution calls for a study for lanol in Los Alamos. I'm wondering at what point is it part of this study that we would be putting our stamp of approval on to actually look at the precedent that that would set? Because what we would be talking about is revenue sharing between governmental entities statewide. And that's kind of a big question mark, right? Does, at one point, does Intel share their tax revenue with Bernalio? At what point would, at what point would our Taos Ski Valley, I see we have our Ski Valley Incorporated Community Relations member here. At what point do their GRTs or our tourism GRTs have to get to before we share with Colfax, for example? So I'm kind of wondering what, and Representative Sanchez isn't here to answer any questions, but I'm kind of wondering what sort of study? Is it just about lanol or is it about the precedent and the process that would kind of be inherent in something like this? Because what the study looks like is actually important. I know it's just a study, but what its parameters are is actually pretty important.
Well, and with all due respect, I understand, if I may, your position here, but you're right. It is just a study. But I am under the impression all this information is public information. So I don't think that we're asking for, or the study would ask for anything that's not already public, somewhat public, GRTs. We're talking about GRTs. And you're right, we don't know what that study is going to look like. I don't know that anyone really knows. I think the request is simply to say, let's do a study and that those perimeters would at that moment be identified as how they're going to achieve what they're set out to achieve, which is, is there opportunity for sharing of that distribution?
And you are right, Commissioner Vehel, the GRT, you know, the way that is determined by law now is public information. But this would be a change in that, that would, would not, I don't know, would it apply just to one county? Because again, this resolution is about a study just for Los Alamos County. But I think that the implications, you know, and the legal precedent would possibly be much further reaching than that. Vice Chair Romero?
Madam Chair, I think your questions would be answered by completing the study itself. That the legislature is the one that will be addressing these issues and how it could actually be implemented. And I think it's just an exceptional situation where Los Alamos County is generating so much GRT. And the fact is that the lab does impact all the, especially the surrounding counties. And it's just a request to see about possibility to share that GRT with the surrounding counties. And that would be a real benefit and possibly a windfall for Taos County. So I don't think it's, there's any real concern there that there would be any, any big precedent setting issue where it would not be good for Taos County.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair. And actually, your comment makes me think of something else that came to me when we talk about the amount of GRT, their budget versus our budget, population versus our population, which the numbers are in the resolution as well. I would just caution us to think about the fact that the context is very different. I would imagine that Los Alamos would have to have a much different fire department, for example, than we might, or maybe not. I mean, we have, we're not sitting on top of nuclear material. So it's just, I'm just thinking a little bit about the context and the potential complications of this. But I don't know if, Mr. Trevio, you wanted to add anything from the legal perspective?
I think it's important to just look at what the actual resolution is for as opposed to some of the recitals. What you're actually resolving to do is to get behind a committee that would study the equitable regional tax distributions from Los Alamos National Laboratories or similar federal research facilities in New Mexico. So that's the first thing you do. And that is, you need support whether the governor is going to do that or legislature is going to do that. You want them to look at that. And then the second direction is be it resolved that, if, basically, that the Legislative Finance Committee and the Revenue Stabilization and Tax Policy Committee be requested to study the issue. So it doesn't go into, so you have to look at that. You have to look at the previous resolution first. So the issue is the equitable regional distributions from Los Alamos Laboratory. So it's limited to only that. I think you were concerned that it would be beyond that. But given the way this thing is written, I don't think it is.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think your concern should be addressed by that.
I do appreciate it. And don't get me wrong, folks, I do definitely, I'm all for efforts to address our income gap and our access to services gap because frankly, it's obscene in our country, our county, our world. So I'm not against trying to share the wealth and share the benefits of profit. I'm just thinking through this a little bit more and about what it might mean. But you're all right. It's a study. So, okay. And those are my comments. I know we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes. Okay. Motion passes. Thank you. This takes us to item 12B, Discussion, Consideration, Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Number 2023-23, A Resolution Updating the 2023-2024 Wildfire Risk Reduction Grant Program. And we have Mr. JR Logan with us this morning. Good morning, JR.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good morning. This resolution is due back to the New Mexico Association of Counties in order to accept a $15,000 grant from the Association of Counties to Taos County. The $15,000 grant would fund a chainsaw program designed for amateurs and folks who go cut their own firewood and also homeowners who are interested in creating defensible space around their homes. This is a program and a class that we fielded a lot of requests for over the years. The only existing chainsaw program in the state is really targeted towards professional thinning contractors. It's a three-day course that includes a CPR class, a field day. And for most homeowners and amateurs, three days is just too much to take off from work. So the Community Wildfire Protection Plan Core Team, which has existed in Taos County since the mid 2010s, has identified this as a priority. We submitted a grant application and NMAC approved that application. So I'm asking the commission today to approve this resolution so that we can accept the funds and develop the course.
Thank you, JR. Commissioners, any questions or comments for JR?
A motion to approve?
Okay. And I will second that. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes. So Resolution Number 2023-23, Updating the 2023-24 Wildfire Risk Reduction Grant Program, has been approved. Thank you, JR.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. This takes us to item 12C on our agenda. Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Number 2023-24, A Resolution Authorizing and Directing the County Treasurer to Disperse Revenue Generated From the Imposition of the 1/4 of 1% Tax for Fire Protection Services and Emergency Medical Services to the Municipalities set out in this resolution in the matter set out herein. And Brent, is this you this morning?
Looks like it. Looks like it.
Patrick's when the draft of the resolution, so. So I gave Patrick the numbers. For the benefit of the commission, the newer commissioners, we, on the November ballot, we did pass a 1/4% grocery receipts tax that was dedicated for fire, knee, and mass service. Around, before it got on the ballot, August, late July, there was a conversation with the municipalities that wanted a share of the grocery receipts tax, since this was a county-wide tax. There were several different meetings. And subsequently, the way it structured was the agreement in those meetings, 45 for the Taos County, 25 for the town of Taos, and then 10 for a village of Questa, 10% for the town of Redver, and 10% for the village of Taos Ski Valley. And that was our agreement that we made with everybody. Folks might not be, some small men's spies might be quite happy with that structure. But that's what was agreed upon in principle. And we're holding firm to that that was our word. And then, so about a month and a half ago, we did, through email, did ask And then, so about a month and a half ago, we did, through email, did ask Mr. Trujillo to lay this out, maybe a JPA or an MOA. He felt that a resolution would suffice. He's also consulted with the Treasurer, and that way, she was on board with this since the beginning of the methodology, so we brought her early on into it. Any specific questions on the resolution, I defer to Mr. Trujillo.
I have a question in regards to, but not, not the resolution itself, but Mr. Hermio, are the other fire, the other entities aware of the breakdown? I mean, do they know we're here today with this resolution?
They don't know we're here today, they know about the breakout.
Okay, got it, I just want to make sure that.
Right, they know about the breakout.
There's been some conversation around that. I know there was many, there was much conversation way back in the day, and certainly, we want to make sure that we're doing, taking care of everyone as best as possible, and of course, at the same time, making sure that we have what we need to, to fulfill what we've set out, we were set up to do.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Behold. Mika?
Brent, what was the breakdown you said on, how, how were we doing that?
It was 25% to the Town of Taos, 10 to the Town of Red River, 10 to the village of Cuesta, and 10 to the village of Taos Ski Valley.
All right.
Madam Chair, Mr. Hermio, what, what is the actual real dollar amount? Just the county, I guess, would be interesting.
So we anticipate for the county portion that for the 10 months that we would receive this, this money, that we would generate 855,000 in grocery receipts tax. So it's approximately 2.2 million is what our bond council expects that we would generate in a one-year's time, and then I was asking them for budget purposes to break it out. So it was the 888 that I mentioned earlier.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero, for the question, and thanks for the answer, Manager Hermio, because that, that's an important number, right? That will go toward helping us with the, the higher wages that we have, that we are about to start paying.
Right.
So, thank you. Any further questions or comments? I'll just comment that this is a good reminder of one of last year's, I would call, biggest achievements, getting this negotiated and on the ballot, and then our community speaking out overwhelmingly in favor of it was a huge step forward for the county. Mr. Trujillo?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner, the idea of making this resolution was mine, and, and the reason for that is because the bond, the issue that was put before the borders was just for Taos County, it's just the county. And the, the breakdown here was negotiated outside of that, which is fine. I think some of these other entities wanted it to be an agreement. An agreement, though, has, has things flowing back and forth. In this instance, the county, it's only one way. The county's receiving the money, the county's dispersing it. In, in my mind, this is just for your clarification, not that I'm, you know, I was talking about community cooperation earlier, I meant that. It's all, it's all a wonderful thing. But in my mind, you could change this if you wanted to, and that's what the resolution says. It's going to be in place based on these distributions until the Commission decides it wants to change, because you, this Commission, has that authority. And if you want to disperse it in this manner, it absolutely can do that. If you want to change it later, you can do that. And I wanted to give you that, that ability.
It, it would take, Chair, it would take another resolution to change that, right?
Correct.
So, so this is a, a document in which to?
Yeah, in fact, that's what it says, until an action, another action.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Of the, of the Commission, so it would have to do that.
Okay.
It isn't just, Brent can't just decide he doesn't like the town of Cuesta, and decide not to, to give him the money. It would have to be the Commission taking another vote, another resolution being passed.
So what I'm hearing is this is sufficient, this, this document?
Yes, the, the only thing that was needed, the, the purpose of this document was to give the Treasurer a mechanism by which she could disperse the money. So that's how I've been working with the Treasurer to see what she needed, and she said this would suffice. So that's why we're here with this.
And at the same time, Chair, this also shows these other entities what has been committed, what, what, what we are committing to in regards, okay.
Absolutely, I mean, it is absolutely doing exactly what an agreement would do. It's just, it makes it clear that, that this is flowing in one direction, and that you are, you have the ability to, to change it if you'd want, not that you'd ever would.
Okay.
In fact, you could change the distributions in, in, in another way. In my mind, you might even be able to, if there was another, another town that you wanted to also contribute to, you may be able to do that as well, where if this was an agreement, you'd have to have agreement from, from everyone, which would be inappropriate, given that the money goes to the county.
Right, understand. Thank you for the clarification, that really helps.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Trujillo, really do also appreciate the background on your approach and why, it makes a lot of sense. So Commissioners, what are your wishes regarding the approval of Resolution Number 2023-24, A Resolution Authorizing and Directing the County Treasurer to Disperse Revenue Generated from the Imposition of the One Quarter of 1% Tax for Fire Protection Services and EMS Services to Municipalities as Set Out in This Resolution?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascherini, is there a second?
Second, oh, go ahead, again.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes, so Resolution Number 2023-24 passes. Thank you very much. And this takes us to Agenda Item 13, our Consent Agenda. Commissioners, is there anything from Items A through L that you would like to have pulled for comment or question? And if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes, the Consent Agenda is approved. This takes us to Item 14, which is our County Managers' Report and Matters. Mr. Hermio?
Thank you, Commissioners. It's more about the meetings I will be attending over the next few days. Our, tomorrow, we'll be at the Cuesta School Board meeting. We will be presenting to the school board our request to use the Rio Cuesta Elementary in order to provide services for the region, since we're unable to do so at the Amalia facility. The state, through their contract agency with North Central Economic Development District, has asked us to reopen a facility, and so we're trying to partner with the school district to, to do it there. This would be a one-to-two-year lease that we would have to obtain from the school district to use, to use the facility. As you may recall from another meeting, we are going to be constructing, we're putting money to construct a kitchen, and that, make that in addition to the existing community center, so we can provide services back up at Amalia. That's going to be a process to obtain that funding and to construct that kitchen. At the same time, we're also asking money to tear down the existing facility as well, so hopefully, the state will give us the money to tear down that facility as well. Tomorrow at 10:00 AM, the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority will be holding its Board of Directors meeting. This will be take place at 10:00 AM at the Kecorson Boardroom. So I will be out of the office attending this meeting. They're going to also be doing a site tour. Ms. O'Brien, who was here earlier, will also be making a presentation through the county's efforts. The Mortgage Finance Authority Board will announce that they will award Taos Housing Partnership a $25,000 grant to use for setup monies, to help set up the office, and however they need that as well. On August 8th, the county's been asked to attend what's called an opioid response network meeting, so we've been selected to participate in this regional summit regarding having conversations around medication for opioid use in disorder and detention facilities. I could have mentioned the summit will be on August 8th. We can only take 16 members, so I'm not sure why that is. I imagine even some of the Commission would like to attend. I do want to take Dr. Bosomo with us. We've been meeting regularly with Dr. Bosomo and getting his ideas on how we could use the opioid monies. He is the contract doctor for, for Core Health, our medical provider in the detention center, but beyond that, he is a native Tausenya that is looking to help us, and understand, he recently got put onto the Board of Directors for the Olycras Hospital, but I want to take Dr. Bosomo with us. I may also see about, which I've not talked to anybody except in my head, they might also take Sylvia Barella, who we've contracted with to write our opioid plan to distribute the opioid funding. I think that'd probably be good for her to attend this meeting as well, because, and she's also going to be here later this afternoon. We were supposed to meet with her yesterday, but she's going to be here meeting with, with Mr. Madrid, Mr. Cordova, and with, I'm not sure if we're meeting with Dr. Bosomo or not, but, so she'll be here meeting with us, kind of a kickoff meeting for her to start working on her opioid plan for Taos County. And you got it in your emails, over the next four meetings, we'll be doing our Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, ICIP, discussion, so begin thinking about that. Before the meeting, we'll have the old plan in there, and then I know Ms. Montoya sent out a memo to Commission and to the Department Heads, we're getting your ideas for the ICIP plan. So it's due a lot earlier this year, I believe it's due August 18th, so we'll use the two July meetings and the two meetings in August to cover it. Later next week, the New Mexico Finance Authority Board will be having the regular board meeting. On their agenda will be a grant request from the county for $50,000 for a comprehensive plan. Mr. Madrid was trying to obtain other funding from Community Development Bureau, from DFA, but we're not able to use that funding. So once we get the grant agreement in place, there'll also be some resolutions that the Commission will have to put in, pass as well, but we'll be able to put out a request proposal at the end of the month and to hire a consultant. Part of this will also be on Ms. Stern's plate to work on the comprehensive plan. Her and Mr. Madrid have already had a conversations regarding getting this funded, so this will also be on her plate to help with it. And then, I just wanted to ask, is the Commission receiving the press releases from the Carson National Forest?
Yes, I am.
Commissioner Romero?
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that I am.
Okay, because then you would see, like, about the Camachi fire and the, we had a burn the other week, I'll make sure that you're included on there, is that enough to be forwarding the emails to you, but if you're already on there. And, Miguel, are you getting them? Okay, so I'll make sure Commissioner Bob Romero is included from the Carson. Colin provided Jason an update, and Max Moulton are progressing nicely on the redesign of the website. So Max Moulton has been quietly working on it on the sideline, so they're going to have the, I want to say the mock, I know there's a different term, Jason gave me last week. So we'll have the prototype, the mock website later on in July for us to, to be looking at it. It's going to be a lot more user-friendly, so we have, because I've been quietly working on that on the sideline with Max Moulton, taking the lead on that for us. Next week, to get everybody excited, but the paychecks will be distributed a little bit earlier, because the Treasurer's Office, Finance, the Assistant's Office are all preparing for year-end, so all the departments are closing out their, their books, so we'll probably have limited service in those offices on Friday, just due to that closeout with AS400 with Triadic and all that process that's entailed. So we'll take advantage of using the, our Facebook page to get the word out on that, so if anybody has business, it's better to do it this week or early part of next week. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Brent, for the update. Commissioners, any questions for our manager?
Madam Chair, I have one on the, I saw the, the email chain with James Kaiser regarding the resolution for the grocery receipts tax for the hospital in New Nantes. Is, is, is that going to be coming before the Commission soon?
Like I indicated to Mr. Kaiser, we will put it on the July meetings, we'll probably have it up for approval on July 18th, but we probably do need to have a work-study session just regarding grocery receipts taxes. So I'll let the Commission know when we can, have time to schedule that. Because I need to probably look about doing it the first week of July, since I think two of you plus me are gone on the week of July 10th through the 15th.
Not gone, just out of commission for a day or so. But yeah, if we could, if that was going to be my question as well, is about retreats or work-studies, because I know that there are some topics, particularly that one, that is time-sensitive, that we might want to have a conversation about. So if we could get those scheduled, that would be good.
And, yes, if I may.
Commissioner Behold.
So you talked about bringing on Sylvia Barella, I believe is the name. Will that plan, she'll be putting a plan together in regards to what, like, reaching out to?
What our options are for using the opioid monies, and so she'll be putting that plan together for us.
Okay, okay. The only reason why I'm asking is because there are, there have been many events or several events that have taken place, and I do believe there's wisdom out there, and I'm hoping that Sylvia will in fact reach out to these other individuals. I, I know you mentioned Mr. Bosomo, Dr. Bosomo, which is great, but there are others as well, so I just want to make sure that, that in the process, we don't, you know, that we're listening to, to the community as well.
Yeah, it'll be something, it won't be quite similar, it'll be, conceptually, it'll be, maybe not the method, but it, concept-wise, will be methods to how we handle the American Rescue Plan Act monies.
And I understand that the number that, the monetary amount that Taos County is going to receive is in fact on the, on our website, have you all seen that? I don't recall if it's accurate or not, but I understand it's 700,000?
It, I, I believe it's not on our website, but that information has been made public.
No, no, it's not on our website.
On the website. Okay, yeah, it's been made public, so that's why, like, the media attention and questions from the community have started to bubble up, because people are seeing the amounts that have been distributed. It's the lead story on KUNM this morning.
How was it?
I didn't see that, okay.
I can tell you in a second.
I was just wondering how accurate.
Tell you, just give me a minute and I'll bring you up.
Okay. Meanwhile, I did want to, thank you. Oh, go ahead.
What we've received so far is two wires, one for $299,655.54, and a second wire for $68,120.73. So that's what we received. I think in total, we're closer to a couple million dollars.
Ah, okay, then that number is off, yeah, I think it was.
Remember, there's, one, two, three or four different settlements as well. There's one with Big Pharma, and then there's one with retailers, that was the executive set, Shin, that we talked about, with like Walgreens, Walmart, there's that settlement money, and then there's one more settlement as well.
Great, thank you. And I'm also excited to hear about the website. A matter of fact, as of yesterday, there was comments received in regards to putting our budget on. A matter of fact, as of yesterday, there was comments received in regards to putting our budget online and some requests. And so I look forward to, uh, certainly, uh, having all that information easily accessible by the public.
That actually raised, I had a couple of, uh, opioid response, some, some settlement, uh, questions. But that, real quick, like, I'm just wondering if, and we don't have to answer this now, if there will be a process for folks to, um, to submit requests. I mean, you've heard them from us for the last two and a half years of what we would like to see on the website, but, um, I'm not sure if there's a point at which it's appropriate or if that's just a mess to ask us to provide feedback.
Uh, one of the, uh, words that, uh, that Jason told me last week is, uh, I think Max is taking it, uh, Gizmo Productions is Max. Yeah, and he's done some other websites throughout the area. Is that he is taking the customer approach and, uh, to the design of the website. Yeah, no, I would like to have some input on it too. I'm looking forward to, uh, when, uh, we could sit down with Max and Colin and, uh, and, uh, see what it looks like, make sure it flows right. And I think there should also be more than one way to find organs as to, and then it's be upfront. And, and, and Colin and Ms. Elam have already, have been talking about, uh, the HR component, being able to apply online. So it's a lot of conversations have happened. I'm not sure of the total amount of conversations.
Thank you, thank you. And just to go back to our approach to how we are going to be making decisions around the opioid settlement, um, for, does everybody maybe share a bit of background from about Sylvia Barrera, who is going to be helping us in case people aren't familiar?
She's, uh, I don't have her resume in front of me. Uh, probably Chris can speak to it off the top of his head. She's worked for approximately twenty-five years in the field. Most recently, she worked with Santa Fe Recovery Center. I think, uh, that was close to twenty years at Santa Fe Recovery Center. She has worked on, uh, detox facilities. A part of her consulting contract for us is, is we sit down with, uh, with, uh, Mr. Tree Hugh here. And now that Dreamtree is finished, now we can start working on that lease. Uh, I was already putting him to work last night. Is, she's going to help, uh, frame that lease from our perspective, that what needs to be in there as well. But, uh, uh, then she left Santa Fe Recovery and then she went to work for a consulting firm called Via Positiva. And with that, uh, uh, Mr. Madrid will fill in the gaps that I can remember off the top of my head.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Uh, county manager got most of the gaps in, in his, his statement. Um, Ms. Barella has roots from, uh, Taos. Her family's from here. She attended school here in her earlier years. Uh, she actually ran Santa Fe Recovery, uh, the past decade before going on to Via Positiva. Uh, she's well regarded in the state, in the industry. I don't think there's anybody I've ever heard that doesn't think highly of her. When she ran Santa, Santa Fe Recovery, I know she grew that, uh, that programming multi-fold. I want to say grew it like three or four times larger over her tenure, uh, by bringing in more funding. Um, and just a wonderful person to work with. I've had the opportunity to work with her in the past and again, she enjoys a, a good reputation. She's very passionate about, uh, about this work and making a difference in the lives of these individuals that are, that are suffering.
Thank you, Mr. Madrid, appreciate that. Any other questions or comments for Brent about his update? No? Okay, Brent, anything else you'd like to share? Okay, thank you very much. Then this will take us to our last section, section fifteen of our agenda, Commissioners' Reports and Matters. Um, item A is new business to be considered at a future commission meeting. Commissioners, anything you'd like to add that we haven't hit on so far? Vice Chair Romero?
Madam Chair, yes, on the June twenty-ninth joint meeting between the town and the, and the county, I think I'd requested last time that we have an item there regarding the, the water systems, the sustainability of our water systems throughout the county. Uh, there is a, a planned, uh, water leadership, uh, uh, council or, uh, program that will be sponsored by UNM Taos in July, August and, uh, in September. And so it will address this issue primarily and, and we could have some presenters. Uh, I, I think I can line up a couple of presenters that, uh, the ones that will be actually, uh, presenting this Water Leadership Institute. And it, it's not, uh, when people hear water, they think it's about the secias and water rights. And, uh, people just love the secias. But, uh, this is really, uh, about the sustainability of our water systems, whether it's the, the Taoski Valley, uh, water system or the mutual domestics around the county, the water sanitation districts of the town to town. Because thi- this actually affects all of us and that we depend on going to the, to turn this big it and we have water for showers or, or wash our dishes or, uh, to drink water. So, uh, it's really, uh, something that's really important for the community to really begin to address. And this, this Leadership Institute is, uh, is designed to begin to do that.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And, uh, maybe, Mr. Manager, you could have a conversation with Town Manager Gonzalez about the agenda. Okay, thank you, great. Um, Commissioners, any other new business to be considered? Okay, then let's go on to item B, which is Commissioners' announcements. Commissioner Beal?
So I have a couple of things. Um, and, uh, I did receive a letter from, um, United States Department of Interior, Bureau of Land Management. And it was addressed to me, but I actually think it was, they meant to send it to our chair. And so, but it is for the entire commission and I know, uh, our county manager is aware of this because I think he also received a letter. The subject is an invitation to participate as a cooperating agency to develop a management plan for the Rio Grande del Norte National Monument. And so, uh, it does have a deadline in which we need to respond. Um, and I, uh, had mentioned to our manager that, uh, we obviously needed to converse, we'll share with, with you all and also find out, uh, what the commission's desire is. I, I certainly want to be part of it and so, um, I'll leave it at that. But, um, uh, Mr. Hademia, what, what was your intent to reply or how did you see this happening?
I see this as probably a, another work study session or, uh, I guess we could have had it on this meeting as an agenda topic. Because you've got to formulate a response and what that response would be like. And then we need to figure out who's even going to write the response. So there's some steps, uh, to it and then, um.
Thank you, Brent, thank you for bringing it up, Commissioner Beal, because it, it does seem like, um, a pretty interesting and important opportunity to be a partner in the, you know, the, each of our national monuments, national parks, whatever, has a management plan, right? And to be part of creating one, this one got on hold, I think, because of change of federal administration shortly after the monument was designated. Nothing happened and now they're diving back in. It's, to me personally, it's, it's an exciting opportunity to partner in that. Maybe because I'm just curious about how it would work.
So if I could read just what they're asking of us to please confirm your intention to accept the BLM's invitation to participate as a cooperating agency by June thirtieth? Um, I'm sorry, I almost thought we blew it. Upon, uh, twenty twenty-three, upon confirmation, the BLM will provide a draft MOU for your review and comment. So I, I get what you're saying, there has to be some.
No, and I'll make sure that we respond that we want to be participating. I can, I know all of you would want to, all of you care about what happens on the BLM and the Forest Service.
Thank you.
Right, yeah, it is my opinion if we don't participate, then we have to accept whatever they come up with. And, and we're representatives for the community, our constituents, so we need to make sure their voices are heard.
Right, and that, I guess is the opportunity to, on the national monument as an example, as of this weekend, I'm still hearing about the switchbacks and.
Yes, I did too.
And, uh, I know they're going to go and talk to you, the Commissioner Romero, about the switchbacks too, so.
And I do have one more?
Sure.
Okay, as you all, uh, will recall, uh, before us, were many constituents concerned about a topic regarding, um, a potential, um, retirement of like, of grazing permits. And, um, and we, we paused, um, with that resolution that was before us, uh, since, um, Senator Heinrich had reached out and said, you know, uh, give us, give us some time to talk to the community and hear their concerns. Uh, so I did receive a callback as well as I believe Commissioners, you all received a letter because it is addressed to all of us. I did want to, and I did, uh, mention to Mr. Edward, I'm not sure if I'm going to pronounce his name right, Tabit Cubero, which is the, um, state, um, director, uh, for the office of our US Senator Martin Heinrich of New Mexico. And so, um, I did, um, say that I would, uh, read a little bit of this because I think it's only fair that, um, um, that the public understands and knows that we have been in, they have been in contact with us. And so I'm going to read just, uh, briefly here. So, uh, on Wednesday, June fourteen, twenty twenty-three, uh, we Commissioners received, uh, this email. I received a call, I believe it was the day before that. And it says, Dear Commissioners, Senator Heinrich appreciates the commission engaging with him and his staff regarding the Wildlife Livestock Conflict Resolution Act from last Congress. The dialogue with you and stakeholders across the state from north to south has been insightful. I'd like to share the following update on the Senator's current and next steps related to those discussions. The Wildlife Conflict Resolution Act has not been introduced, reintroduced this Congress and Senator Heinrich does not plan to reintroduce, reintroduce the legislation this Congress. So that's, uh, now off the table. And so, um, I believe the community is, for the most part, well aware as word gets, um, through real quickly. And, um, and so they should be very content that speaking up and Heinrich did listen and, and has, um, decided this is not going to happen. So also it's, uh, Senator Heinrich has engaged directly with New Mexicans to support investments in agriculture and ensure the continued resilience of the lands and water we rely on. The Senator and his staff have, I'm sorry, have had dozens of meetings with New Mexicans that included extensive conversations about the legislation you inquired about. The Senator and his staff are also continuing to meet with all interested stakeholders to find paths to reduce conflicts between livestock and wildlife. As Chairman of the Senate Agricultural Appropriations Subcommittee, Senator Heinrich is committed to investing in New Mexico's agricultural economy and way of life. To do that, he introduced and co-sponsored a number of bills in Congress to support farmers and ranchers, including a, number one bipartisan. And I'm not sure if I'm going to pronounce this, uh, right. Um, so I'm looking at our chair here, Agriboltics Research and Demonstration Act. Um, also, the second one is, uh, Bi- Bi- Bicameral Agricultural Resilience Act and Bipartisan Kettle Price Transparency and Discovery Act. So, um, basically, um, Senator Heinrich is also looking forward to announcing the Senate's Agricultural Appropriations Bill in the coming weeks and will, which will invest billions in supporting farmers, ranchers and agricultural economy. They also, um, Edward, uh, spoke about working together with community members in Taos, uh, in agricultural endeavors. And so we have some, um, future conversations on what that might look like, what next steps look, looks like. So I just, I wanted to share this good news with all of you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that, appreciate it and appreciate, um, um, the team from Heinrich's office reaching out to us about this, so, thank you. Um, I have just one announcement, I'm not sure if anyone else has, has any. Um, Pamela Mathis from the BLM had reached out to us the week before last about a meeting, um, regarding the fatalities that have happened, um, in the rafting industry on our stretch of the beautiful Rio Grande. Um, so Friday morning, a week, a week ago, it was at the ninth, um, the BLM convened a meeting down at the, the visitor center in Pilar, which was, um, mostly the raft company operators, um, and various BLM staff, um, including various enforcement folks, some of whom were, were veteran or former river raft guides, which was really interesting. I was there, um, Mr. Daniel Varela, our EMS director was there also on behalf of Taos County First Responders. I was very grateful for that, his input was, was really key. Um, and then Rita O'Connell from Senator Heinrich's office was there too. And I just want to commend the BLM for holding that community conversation because it had been an idea on the table that they would shut down their access points to the river because of what had been happening. Um, and you know, the question is, is like, is it dangerous right now? Is it more dangerous than last year when the flow was low and there were still fatalities? The conversation was really rich, um, and a lot of different perspectives. Where the BLM landed was that they were not going to close off access. One of the points behind that decision was, um, was one, I was like, wow, what? I, I didn't think of that. When you have the experts on the water, you have more eyes, ears and skills on the water. So the idea was if they shut down their access points, people are still going to be on the river. It will just be less safe because you won't have people who know the river and know how to navigate it there to help out in case of emergency. So I give them credit for listening. Um, I give credit to everyone, um, especially those business people who showed up at nine AM to voice their input. Um, and I, I, I'm just, it was a great meeting, um, and another example of our community being heard. And, uh, the people who then had decision-making authority really taking what they heard into, into account when they made the decision. So it was a, just wanted to fill you on that that happened. Um, and it was a, it was a wonderful conversation. So thanks again to the BLM.
I have one last, and it's, I'm going to backtrack a little bit here on, uh, what I'd like to see, uh, moving forward. And I, um, know, Mr. Hademia, we've had a brief conversation in regards to the top of the hills. First of all, I'd like to remind everyone tomorrow is the last working group meeting, uh, that will be held at five thirty at Sagebrush. Um, but I would like for Taos County to engage with, uh, Carson National Forest. Um, as you all know, Commissioners, this falls mostly in my district and it's, it's been quite the chore, um, in regards to trying to figure this out. But I think it's important. I have been asked by, uh, constituents that, um, that we Taos County, uh, take a stand in some form or fashion. And I think it's, uh, important that we first start with, uh, meeting with Carson National Forest.
Thank you, Commissioner Beal, and thank you for your effort, hours and passion around that issue. If there are no other announcements, we can move on to item fifteen C, which is our board or committee reports. Um, and I think I might have the only one this time, which is our safety commission, our safety committee met, the Taos County Safety Committee met last week. Um, and for, for folks who are new or watching, that is where we are, we are intended to have a representative from each department show up once a month, first Thursday of every month. And there's various topics around reducing risk and, and keeping each other safe in our workplace and in our work. Um, last week, pretty interesting, we all got training on how to use fire extinguishers. Um, so good reminder for those who would use them already, um, good practice and introduction for those who hadn't. So, um, thanks to Mike and James, our fire team, who are out there lighting fires for us to put out. Um, it was important. And then coordinated with that is, is always conversation about like, does each office or department have the supplies they need in case something happens, whether that's a cut or an active shooter or a fire? Are our fire extinguishers up to date? Um, but I just wanted to encourage folks to pay attention to that meeting because we only have like fifty percent participation from our county departments. And, and might just throw it all out to, to us as the commission team and management team about how we might encourage greater participation. Because frankly, like, it, it seems like, you know, just another random thing that comes up on, in our email and our calendar, but I've learned how to use Narcon. Um, I've learned how to give CPR, um, all these things that I hope I never have to know. But just in case, it's, it, it, I actually think that it's a good, good step, maybe a small step, but a really good step toward keeping each other safe as we do our jobs.
And Chair, if I, uh, I would like to share with the commission that you and I attended the, um, Taos Valley Watershed Coalition Field Trip on the McGathie, uh, property, um, public area. It was really an interesting, um, field trip. I have to tell you that, uh, I, besides, uh, receiving, uh, or seeing this education, educational, uh, component in. component in wildfires and some history on, on ring dating, is that how they call it? And it was, it was just super, super helpful. It certainly brought awareness to wildfires and how they've always existed and, and actually kind of helped me to relax now that we're seeing this other fire on this, in the, what is it called? In the Alfito area?
The Comanche Fire.
Contra, yeah, thank you, Contra Fire. And so I just wanted to share that we did attend that event and, and it was really insightful, very helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner Beal. Any further comments, questions? Okay, then I believe this takes us to the, the end of our agenda. Unless, Mr. Manager, if you have anything else? No? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at 11:35 AM. We have that motion from Miguel. Is there a second, second from Commissioner Mascheranes? Madam Clerk, please call for the vote. Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Beal? Commissioner Mascheranes?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair brush. Yes, we are adjourned at 11:35 AM, thank you, everybody.